Support, learning and instruction. At this time, I will call on Chief Officer Dr. Jewel Harmon, Chief Canability Officer and Executive Director Mr. Tashawn Christie to begin the presentation.
Good evening, President Daniels, members of the board, Dr. Watts, Ms. Howley. Our time is short, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Christie and I'll let the DARTS team begin their presentation.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, President Daniels, Vice President Beddinger, Board Directors, Dr. Watts, Ms. Howley and Ms. Zantello. Thank you for allowing us this time to share with you. I'm going to share my screen now just to make sure that everyone can see it. Please let me know once you can see my screen. All right. Thank you. So we truly appreciate this opportunity to speak to you this evening. Joining me today are my fellow DARTS leaders. Our purpose is to paint a picture of learning technology through the lenses of digital equity, cross-district partnerships, collaboration and technical expertise. So let me get right into the agenda here. So first, we'll start with our DARTS overview, just to give you an idea of who we are. And the reason that we wanted to do this again is because it takes an entire team in order to create and execute a vision. So as long as we can all get on the same page about a few things that we do, then I think it'll be easier for you to understand kind of the larger logistics of what we're trying to accomplish with supporting learning technology. So you'll hear from each one of these teams. And again, we have some short sections. We have about an hour, but we're sure we can get through the content and as well as we will have at the end, a section for questions. So if you can allow us to get through our content, then I'm sure we'll have from 10 to 15 minutes at the end for questions. As always, you can always ask for clarifying as we go along. I just wanted you to be aware that we do have questions at the end. So with that said, who are we? We are DARTS. We're a flexible, solutions-oriented, dedicated-to-our-craft, student-centered team that supports learning. As you can see, as part of our own kind of team graphic, student learning is always at the center of what we do. There's oftentimes where as a team, we need to continue to remind ourselves in our decision-making why exactly we are here. So student learning in support of teachers who support student learning directly, administration and staff. And then, as you notice, it's a, it's kind of a circular puzzle diagram. So it looks like a dartboard, which is definitely intentional. With help from our communications team, we came up with a good visual that helps to unify our team. As you notice with the puzzle pieces, it's very easy for us to move the pieces around. So regardless of how we move those pieces around, we always stay connected. So one of the things that we had to do as a team very early on is to figure out a way to put our core values of equity excellence and community into something that could be actionable for our team. So we landed on these core, our own areas of focus, which are security, digital citizenship and communication. All these things need to be in place in order for us to deliver technology in a way that makes sense to our district. We're working to make these part of our everyday work, but you'll notice the big word on top is innovation. We have needed to innovate at every turn over the last 14 months and prior to make sure that we are flexible and available to support all the teams and all the staff and all the community that relies on us. So part of our responsibility is to understand the needs of everyone that we support. And what you will see from the team is a clear understanding of our intent and continuous improvement based on our impact. So our continuous agenda and all the work that we do is digital equity in support of teaching and learning. But this is not to be confused with a goal, right? The goal is a moment in time. This is top of mind, intentional data-informed actions that we take. So for some time, especially since the pandemic, the definition of digital equity has been extremely limited in scope. If you use the common definition, which is limited to access, which is cables and wires, our intent and our intent as a team and purpose won't make sense. This is an evolving area of research, but understanding continues to expand and evolve as we evolve as a team. So allow me to expand the definition that we're beginning to embrace and that applies to our work and support of teaching and learning. So digital equity includes a digital foundation, which is equitable access. And again, access, right, to the devices and internet to best support learning. A lot of digital equity conversations stop here. Do all of our students have all the technology that they need, right? But we, as a team, over the last couple of years have discovered that that's not enough, right? Conditions for learning: equitable access to content, knowledge, skills and tools to best support learning. One of the things that we focus on as a team, especially in our digital learning team, and you'll hear more about that a little bit later, is how do we support teachers in ways to integrate tools and to help them understand that we can create this environment of engagement? And then meaningful opportunities: equitable access to powerful learning experiences. We want to make it sure that all of our tools can be used to their fullest extent and possibility. Again, if we stop at digital foundation, we never reach this meaningful opportunities piece. And that's why we needed to talk about that a little bit more as part of this conversation. So the key word in all of this is access. And that access word is the word that you will hear kind of woven throughout our narratives. The things that we talk about, it has to do with creating access, whether creating access through data, creating access to support, creating access to research, creating access through our work in policies that impact students, to all of that. It really comes down to digital equity and a broader picture of what that is. So with that as our landscape, allow me to introduce our DARTS leadership, who will get us started. So Michelle Chin is up.
Thank you, Tashawn. Good evening, President Daniels, Vice President Beddinger, Board Directors, Dr. Watts, Ms. Howley, Ms. Zantello. I'm Michelle Chin, Assistant Director of Data Services, and I appreciate the opportunity tonight to introduce you to my team and our work. So my team focuses on maintaining data and processes for enterprise applications, which includes the student information and enterprise resource planning systems. Data reliability and consistency are core to our work. We use repeatable standards to ensure data quality and integrity. Training, communication, partnering with colleagues in DARTS and other communities is key to our data validation and collection processes. Really being able to form those relationships and build that trust of what we're doing and why we're doing it are important to us and the success of our team. When we look at the primary functions of the data services team, we promote the use of Skyward, integrate with third-party applications and support data access. Ways that we do this are to partner closely with schools and departments so that we have an integrated approach. We need to adhere to reporting requirements, guidelines, policies, but it's important for us to do that within the confines of the systems as well, to understand how our partners use the systems and ensuring that we've got the security in place so that the right people access the right data. Our secondary functions help us in this direction as well, where we lead process reviews and facilitate data validations. So again, it all comes down to, are we getting the data, access to the data that we need? Are we able to trust the data for the accuracy and the consistency? When I think about the tangible ways that our work manifests itself, we have right now one foot in this school year and one foot in the next school year. And when I talk about this school year, things that I think about are the ways that we are supporting hybrid learning. So our in-person and our remote learning, how are we recording data? How are we reporting data? How are we making that accessible to schools so that they can use that as well? We'll be looking towards the end of this school year, the creation of report cards, as well as supporting graduation requirements. When I think about the next school year, we're looking at scheduling as well as the impacts of our boundaries. So again, supporting communication, targeted communication, whether through our communication partner or with the schools. As I mentioned earlier, we partner with other communities. A couple of ways we do that, maybe familiar to the board, is you've approved two of the projects that my team is working closely on right now. One is with human resources on the position management project. And the other is with student and family services, the implementation of a new tool for new student online enrollment. So that gives you a little bit of an overview of the data services team. I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And one of the things that Michelle pointed out was data accuracy, which allows us to tell the truth about our impact of our technology investments through grades and other things that we find through our Skyward system. So thank you, Michelle. Next, I'd like to introduce Charity Jensen.
Good evening, President Daniels, Vice President Beddinger, Board Directors, Dr. Watts, Ms. Howley, Ms. Zantello. My name is Charity Jensen. I recently joined DARTS team as the Assistant Director of Assessment, and I want to thank you for this time tonight to share a little about our assessment team. The assessment team works with schools and other central administration teams to build a system of assessment, a system that incorporates state-required and district-selected assessments that educators can use to measure student learning and identify when interventions are necessary to prepare each student for their future after high school. Our goal is to translate the language of compliance into a system of assessment designed to meet student goals. A current project that helps exemplify some of the work that we do in terms of translating language of compliance is the Graduation Requirement Emergency Waiver Program that we were able to introduce to high school principals and counselors earlier today. Building off the State Board of Education rules and Resolution 1602, which you approved earlier this month, we have created tools for counselors to use to students and families while discussing if a waiver is appropriate for that student's post-secondary goals. Working with DARTS teams, we built a Power App form to move that waiver request through the approval process and collect the necessary data for program evaluation and State Board of Education and OSPI audits. The assessment team's primary functions are building a cohesive system of assessment in support of educators and in compliance with administration protocols. We also work to ensure our efforts support accountability and are developing formative assessment practices to build a whole picture of student learning. In order to reach these goals, we provide assessment PD and support while also managing the test delivery and reporting systems associated with our assessment. Collaborating with the rest of DARTS and other central administration teams and our schools will help us develop a cohesive system of assessment in service of preparing all students for their future. Thank you for your time.
So thank you, Charity. As members of our team and everyone knows, assessment isn't just a about-taking test, right? It's also about making sure that we can evaluate where any student is at any given time, and it takes an entire system in order to do that. A lot of the collaborative work today has been excellent and in the past, and we're going to continue to work that in the future. So thank you, Charity. And now I introduce Dr. Ashley Berklin.
Thanks, Tashawn. Good evening, President Daniels, Vice President Beddinger, members of the board, Dr. Watts, Ms. Howley and Ms. Zantello. Thanks for the opportunity tonight to talk a little bit more about the work of the research team. So I'll let you all do a little reading on this slide about the work that the research team does and how we serve. But there are a couple of things that I want to call your attention to. One is about the continual investment in data, all in support of student learning. And the other is about building a culture of data literacy, which is really what a lot of our work is grounded in. And I just want to take a little time to talk about our data beliefs, which are wrapped into this whole notion of data literacy beyond just looking at data. One of the things that we tell our data users to keep in mind is that data is neutral and how we present it is neutral, and the context comes from the user and how they interpret that data. Another one is that data use is not a one-time event. It's an iterative and ongoing process. So to really build that culture of data literacy, you have to keep doing it, get that practice in. And the last one that I think is one of the most important ones is that everybody's a data user. You don't have to be deep in the system and know how to create a dashboard or create a pivot table in Excel, but everybody can meet data somewhere and get something out of it. So here are our primary and secondary functions of the team. I'm just going to do a quick overview of what some of those pieces look like that our team is working on. The first is around program evaluation and research, and that also includes pilots. And one thing that you might be familiar with that came across the board a few weeks ago was about the K2 Early Learning Device Pilot. And our team is working with digital learning and technology services on that so we can capture data on what that experience is like for our youngest learners. In terms of performance management systems, we're doing some work and research around creating a system for district and school accountability. Right now, we're really in the research phase of looking at what best practices and identifying potential indicators for what a system could look like. In addition, research and data sharing requests funnel through the research team. So there's a cross-community committee that meets four times a year to look at and approve external research applications. This could be from some of our university partners, or it could be from our internal teachers that are working on an advanced degree and need to do research to complete that degree. We implemented this process so that there was consistency for everybody that wants to do research within the district. Survey creation has been a huge part of our work over this last year and during times of remote and hybrid learning. Our team's involved with not only creation and implementation, but also the sharing of results. And we've made it a practice this year to create a dashboard for pretty much every survey that has been completed. So those results are out there, and in most cases, they're available to the public as well. I know I skipped one, and that was intentional because that's the main work of our team is around data visualization. We are the managers of a system called Vision, where we house all of our data dashboards, which are used by school and district leaders, as well as other school staff, like counselors, interventionists, coaches, et cetera. Right now, the focus has been on student data, but we're working with our partners in HR, finance, to start to expand what that platform can look like. And there is one thing that I want to highlight. Is there a slide? Yes, all right. One project that we worked on over this past year that I want to highlight is our Fast Facts dashboard. And one of the reasons I want to highlight this is because it was a really collaborative process among all members of DARTS. And it was weekly meetings going over what this could look like. And this is now available publicly to our community, to you all, whoever wants to take a look. And it's really blending data and narrative together and telling a story about who we are in KSD, from the number of students we have, to the demographics, to our staff and other indicators. So I would encourage you all to take a look if you haven't yet. We also collaborated with our communications team to get this out and living on our website. And it's something that we're really proud of from this year. And then looking forward to the end of this year and to next year, we will be doing some work to support the strategic plan refresh and what indicators look like for that. And then we'll also be doing a look back on this school year to understand experiences of students, staff and family over the course of the year. What was the quality of their experience? How did outcomes end up differing by students who were in a remote versus in-person environment? So all things we're looking forward to answering as the school year closes out. Thank you for your time tonight, and I'll pass it back to Tashawn.
Thank you, Ashley. So one of the things that Ashley mentioned that I want to point out is that everyone is a data user. We strongly feel that. We feel that one of the biggest challenges is making sure that that data is accessible, right? Access again. So we work really hard to ensure that the things that we create are able to be understood by everyone. A lot of context involved, and we work collaboratively across communities with that. So thank you again, Ashley. And allow me to introduce Amy Born.
Thank you, Tashawn. Good evening, President Daniels, Vice President Beddinger, members of the board, Dr. Watts, Ms. Howley, Ms. Zantello. My name is Amy Born, and I'm Assistant Director of Technology Support Services. Thank you for this opportunity to meet with you all of this, all of you this evening. My team supports computer hardware and software technology for the entire KSD community. We provide the leadership and the delivery of technology solutions. We research and recommend equipment for the one-to-one program, as well as partner with other KSD communities to assist with providing technological solutions for their needs. And my team's primary functions, as you can see, are customer support, technology support and application development and support. For customer support, we supported, we support the entire district remotely through phone, emails and Teams chat. During full remote, my team increased our support hours from 4:30 PM to 7:00 PM to provide additional support to our community. Technology support, during the pandemic, my team provides onsite curbside support on Tuesdays and Thursdays to support remote students and staff, as well as doing onsite tickets during hybrid to support in-person learning. During full remote, we partnered with transportation to provide deliveries to families who don't have the ability to come in for support. And we also partnered with the teacher librarians so we can provide technical assistance and provide additional computer swaps so they can better help their community. Application development and support, my team has created the Employee Health Assessment. It's the form that all KSD staff have been using to verify their health prior to entering any building within the district. The entire process is automated for ease of use. Another application that my team has created is the Computer Help application, which can be found on every machine in the district. It assists with troubleshooting and resolving issues by checking the health of a computer and allows a user to fix basic issues with a click of a button. This has been tremendous help, especially during remote learning, and it continues to be a help to students. Our secondary functions are one-to-one support and new hardware and software technologies. For one-to-one support, we have provided support in the tech rooms out at the secondary schools and supported collections and deployments to ensure students are readily equipped for learning. For new hardware and software technologies, we have established a process to review software applications, websites and online tools for approval and use within the district. Thanks to a partnership with Learn Platform, staff can now efficiently find, request, manage and provide feedback on approved digital learning tools. And another application, we have also implemented Incident IQ, which is our new service management platform, and it provides ticketing, asset management and analytics so we can predict issues before they become large. Next steps for my team, we're currently in the process of implementing a new way of imaging and managing computers. The team is working on getting all the computers in the district managed through the cloud, making it easier to put a computer back to its original state, preventing the user to have to come in to get their machine re-image. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amy. So one of the things that is often not necessarily known is that this team manages over 30,000 devices and does an exceptional job and with flexibility and consistency across all of our user groups. Have dealt directly with the families, have dealt directly with community and staff consistently since March of 2020, right? In person and remote by extending hours, and they've done a really good job in keeping us running as a system. So thank you, Amy. Next, I'd like to introduce Ed McAlpine.
Thanks, Tashawn. Good evening, President Daniels, Vice President Beddinger, Board of Directors, Dr. Watts, Ms. Howley and Ms. Zantello. My name is Ed McAlpine. I am the Assistant Director of Technology Infrastructure and Operations, and I want to say thank you for allowing us to share how, in this case, Technology Infrastructure and Operations Team serves the district. So I want to start that with doing a quick overview of our primary and secondary functions as a team. So the Technology Infrastructure and Operations Team serves the critical purpose of identity and access management, cybersecurity and IT compliance. All right, well, let's take a little closer look at what those mean. From identity and access management, that's really about, hey, who should have access to the district's systems, right? Who are those named users and their associated user accounts and group accounts? And what should they have access to and not have access to? A cybersecurity perspective, it's about protecting those accounts and the associated resources from unauthorized access as well as internal and external cyber attacks. On the IT compliance front, this is about ensuring the district's IT infrastructure and systems are operating in compliance with state and federal governance and board policy. Now, we perform those functions within the context of common technology infrastructure, such as our network infrastructure, which means our wired, wireless, internet and server computing platforms, our cloud computing environments, such as Office 365, and our voice services, such as the district's phone system and the school-based telecom systems. And I'd like to give you some examples of some recent projects and highlights some things that have been instrumental to facilitating remote and hybrid learning. On the inter-networking front, we've gone in and facilitated significant school-building level network improvements that include complete hardware refresh of all the equipment. And in fact, this is the final year of a five-year network hardware refresh for the district. We've also been working to do things like doubling the network throughput for the backbone of each of the school buildings, knowing that this would be needed to support hybrid learning. Additionally, we've implemented supplemental internet service and almost doubled our normal 10-gig internet circuit to now supplemental service that includes a total combined bandwidth of 17 gigs per second. These improvements have indeed been instrumental in ensuring successful instructional content delivery using Teams and other online learning technologies. Recent voice projects, examples include, and we know that during remote learning, we had to ensure ongoing community's ability to contact school building leaders and administration during the building closures. So we ended up integrating the district's on-premise phone system with Microsoft Teams and did the needed programming to ensure incoming phone calls were transparently rerouted to the appropriate staff members' Teams phones. We also made sure that Teams phone services were enabled for teachers and paraeducators to help support remote learning and communication with parents and guardians. Some examples of cloud computing, security and compliance projects includes needing to simplify the process of creating classroom teams for teachers and rostering other students. So we deployed an automation system that creates the classroom team using data from Skyward, adds the appropriate teacher and the students automatically, helping facilitate seamless transition. We've also recently conducted third-party security audits of our Microsoft 365 cloud environment to ensure continued cybersecurity of that cloud computing environment. Now, we have been very intentional in scaling up our infrastructures in the district to support the instructional models that are used now and with an outlook for the future. And to help fund those needed infrastructure improvements, we've made extensive use of the federal E-Rate Funding Program for network hardware and internet service discounts. Through this program, we've been able to realize funding savings of over $3.4 million in the past five years for the district. This has helped ensure that we are stretching not only operational budgets, but tech levy dollars to their maximum potential. From a next steps perspective, things that are on the immediate horizon for the Technology Infrastructure Team on the inter-networking front, well, we need to finish that hardware refresh of the network equipment at the last remaining, eight remaining schools in the district this summer. We also will be performing a network and phone infrastructure installations at our two new schools that are under construction currently. at our two new schools that are under construction currently, River Ridge and Kent Laboratory Academy. Additionally, we will be doing our E-Rate twenty twenty funding year application filings in the pursuit of upgrading needed school building fiber cabling infrastructures. And on the voice front, we will also be conducting a district phone system upgrade for both its hardware and associated software components. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. As Ed demonstrated, implementing and supporting a one-to-one plan and technology as a whole is not only about the devices and their refresh, but how students and staff at all of our schools and sites can connect and access resources. E-Rate has allowed us to provide significant network upgrades at a fraction of the cost. So, thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Justin Talmage and Melissa Benner.
Thank you so much, Deshaun, and good evening, President Daniels, Vice President Bettinger, members of the board, Dr. Watts, as well as Ms. Hallie and Ms. Santello. My name is Justin Talmage, Assistant Director of Digital Learning. I would also like to introduce Melissa Benner. She's our digital learning supervisor. We will be partnering on this presentation tonight.
Good evening, President Daniels, Vice President Bettinger, members of the board, Dr. Watts, Ms. Hallie and Ms. Santello. I am beyond excited to partner with Justin to represent the amazing work of our team.
At the core of our work, the digital learning team represents the voice of students and staff. We strive to provide equitable access through digital learning tools as well as the longstanding KSD one-to-one device initiative. In particular, our three primary functions include building capacity for effective digital learning, as you'll be able to see on the next slide. We accomplish this building of capacity by providing a range of professional learning opportunities to KSD staff in a variety of formats, and that includes anytime, anywhere learning, sometimes known as PD and your PJs. The second function, our primary function, would be empowering our teacher librarian technology integration specialists. We do this through professional development as well as one-on-one coaching so that they can support staff in the buildings to foster an environment in which student access and achievement is the primary focus. Our third primary function is increasing student access and engagement, which we do through digital learning tools that create opportunities for students to experience differentiated instruction as well as interactive and experiential learning.
In addition to those three primary functions that Justin just mentioned, we also actively support two other priorities, which include promoting digital citizenship and supporting a variety of digital learning initiatives, including the one-to-one device program among others.
Before we move on to talk a little bit about some of our projects, I want to pause for a second and give a huge shout out to our teacher librarian technology integration specialists, the para-professionals that serve with them, as well as our secondary library admin assistants. In addition to teaching classes and of course instilling a love of books and a thirst for knowledge, they also play a critical role as conduits between DARTs and the schools. In this role, they ensure that students and staff have the technology they need and can access support that they need when things don't work right sometimes. As you can very well imagine, they have been serving a vital role throughout remote learning and during the most recent transition to hybrid learning as well.
Okay, well, looking forward at some of our project highlights, our team has worked diligently to infuse the DARTs team's area of focus in all we do. One way innovation for us was accomplished this year was through our publicly available Family Tech Academy, which provided a range of access, the tutorials and guides for using common KSD learning tools, as well as establishing a partnership with Microsoft to provide live synchronous training for families. Over the summer and into the fall, we saw hundreds of families supported by this project, and we look forward to reflectively modify and expand this support in the coming years.
As we look to the work ahead, we have a few projects that we want to highlight. One of these is our newly created Digital Learning Ambassador Program, which is really a network of teacher leaders who are passionate about using technology to improve teaching and learning. We believe that this program is going to be critical to creating a culture of effective technology integration at the classroom level. The second project is the creation of a digital learning resource hub on KSD's Employee Intranet, known as Staff Link. We want this resource to be relevant for staff by highlighting the ways in which tools can be used effectively. We're planning to showcase the work of our digital learning ambassadors greatly on this new resource hub. I hope you can tell how passionate we are about this work and really about the powerful impact we get to have on the lives of KSD staff and students. Melissa and I would like to thank you for allowing us this brief time to share our passion with you.
Great, thank you. So a couple of things that we mentioned when we were talking about digital equity and specific to digital learning is the concepts of conditions, creating conditions for learning to help with access and also creating meaningful opportunities. We're really excited about the Digital Learning Ambassador Program because with that, we can really cover two of those really key areas of digital equity. So, thank you, Justin and Melissa. And last but certainly not least, I'd like to invite Joel Berrano, excuse me, Joel, Joel Berrano.
Thank you, Deshaun. Good evening, President Daniels, Vice President Bettinger, members of the board, Dr. Watts, Ms. Hallie and Ms. Santello. Thank you for your time this evening to talk about the core work of the Innovation Strategy and Performance Team. My name is Joel Berrano and I serve as the Assistant Director of Innovation Strategy and Performance. Where at the core of our work, our purpose is to develop data-informed and inclusive strategies that dismantle inequitable systems and foster achievement for all students. To develop those strategies, it's important that we work with all of our stakeholders, which includes first and foremost our students and their families, but also our staff and our community, including community-based and education partners, like our regional districts and institutions of higher ed. We're also committed to continuous improvement, incorporating Plan Do, Study Act and After Action Review in all facets of our work so we can curate and share those best we know practices. A good way to think of how we engage Team KSD is as a thought partner in problem solving, a solutions broker of sorts that helps strategically align needs and opportunities. Then as those solutions are identified, whether that solution be a tool or a service or a partnership or a grant or anything in between, we partner from idea to implementation to build capacity across our system and understand the impact of our work on staff and student outcomes. A tall order, but truly a great opportunity to serve KSD in a unique capacity, and we have an incredible team that really lives and leads this work on a daily basis. If I may take a personal point of privilege, the team we've built over the past several years has really co-created this incredible vision for how we innovate and iterate in these different areas, and their individual growth has been absolutely one of the highlights of my thirteen years in KSD. So taking a look more specifically at the functions of how we serve as the Innovation Strategy and Performance Team, there's five areas, three primary and two secondary, that really capture the focus of our strategy work. First of those being college career and life readiness, where we build capacity to support students as they develop their college-going identity and make informed decisions about their future with family. And when we say college, it's important to note that we include two-year, four-year transfer and trade in all of that as well. And that really underscores the team approach that we take to this work, regularly collaborating with our colleagues in CTE, Student Services and Inclusive Ed. Also, project strategy and governance, where we build capacity to streamline coordination, communication and innovation around our project-based work, which is of course tailored to what that looks like in each KSD community. We have released project management toolkits, which include templates and resources to catalyze project planning, big and small. Policy and legislation, where we help our system adapt to changes coming from the federal, state and local levels and interpret the impacts of those changes on district systems and processes. Coordination of technology levy initiatives and grants and community partnerships are two of our secondary functions. The coordination of technology levy initiatives is where we continually align technology solutions to learning targets for students and the access needs that they may have, ultimately ensuring timelines and budget targets are met. And finally, with grants and community partnerships, we're incredibly blessed to work with a variety of incredible individuals and organizations with the goal of expanding the breadth of equitable supports available. Organizations like College Success Foundation, Community Center for Education Results, UW Seattle and the Keep Alliance, which includes UW Tacoma, Green River and Renton Tech to name a few. And speaking of partnerships in our college and career space, one of the projects I wanted to highlight was our GEAR Up Achievers Program, which directly serves over a thousand KSD students and their families. GEAR Up is actually an acronym that stands for gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs and is a federal grant through the US Department of Education in partnership with the University of Washington and three of our neighboring districts to provide a cohort of students with intensive supports to access, persist and achieve in their post-secondary pathway of choice. This is a really exciting program for us, given the multitude of opportunities, but a seven-year multimillion dollar investment in our students and families. We've enjoyed thinking creatively with our building leaders about how we create sustainable programming and tailor that work to the needs of each school's community. Each year, a work plan is developed collaboratively with input from students, families and school staff, such as building administrators, counselors, teachers and central office teams like CTE, Teaching and Learning, Student Services. Even throughout the pandemic, our GEAR Up program never paused. Most recently, our work has included a series of family engagement events, some hosted by individual GEAR Up schools and others hosted across all of them, that have included things like a virtual planetarium visit for students interested in astronomy majors and related STEM career pathways. Our partnership with Boeing brought a panel of aerospace professionals together to share their story and encourage our listeners. And our partnership with the University of Washington created space for our college students themselves to share about the steps that they took for their for college, their majors and the admission process from their perspectives. One of the things that we've recognized through our work in this program is how much especially our first-gen students depend on staff to share information about planning for, preparing for and what to expect when they enter college. And so these events and creating these spaces for our students to connect with their peers and professionals who look like them and are passionate about what they're passionate about has been just an incredibly fulfilling experience for our whole team. So what's next? There are a few things, among many of course, that we believe will be of particular interest to the board moving forward. So in our area of policy and legislation, we're conducting research and engaging in those initial discussions about the revision of Electronic Resources Policy twenty twenty-two and Procedure twenty twenty-two P, really looking to refocus on responsible use as opposed to acceptable use and compliance. This work will be done in partnership with really all of our DARTs teams and many other teams and communities like Teaching and Learning, with a shared goal of deepening systems coherence around digital citizenship initiatives. And finally, related to our technology levy work, we're actively reimagining what technology, learning technology access looks like across our system and how we use digital equity as a primary lens to guide that work. As you can imagine, the COVID pandemic has provided a unique opportunity for us to think differently about how technology complements instruction and curriculum. Some of the initial pieces of that work you'll see on the agenda for our regular meeting tonight. So with that, thank you again for the opportunity to share about the work of the Innovation Strategy and Performance Team. I'll turn it back over to Deshaun to take us through the conclusion of our presentation this evening.
Thank you, Joel. So innovation has been core to our work. The Innovation Strategy and Performance Team has created many of the structures that allow us to be flexible and remove barriers from our not being able to support students to us being able to support students with all the flexibility that we need. So, thank you, Joel. So back to innovation. Our keyword tonight was access. That includes but is not limited to our one-to-one programs. When we talk about security, it ensures that, it ensures that access is safe. Digital citizenship helps to understand how to access as part of a larger community and communication lets you know how access will look. So across all of our teams, again, it's not just about technology. It's the use of technology as a tool to meet KSD's core values. Realignment of our initiatives, because we have learned a tremendous amount over the last fourteen months and will continue to apply that learning to the future. Our partnerships focusing on being as tight a community as possible and connecting with as many communities as possible so that we can share knowledge and share strength, then continuing to focus on how all of our work aligns to student success and using that as a measurement of our success. So with that said, thank you for your time. Thank you for listening throughout and thank you for being engaged with our presentation. Questions and responses. The reason I put responses here is that sometimes we won't be able to give you a direct answer, but we will respond in time for things that we need to research. So are there any questions?
I have a question. Thank you again to the DARTs team for the presentation. It's always great to get more in-depth knowledge and awareness of the happenings. So I really appreciate the presentation. Going back to digital equity, where you talked about digital foundations and access, I thought that was all amazing. But one question mark I wrote as I talked about questions, we have devices, we have conditions for learning, we have meaningful opportunities. What I struggle and sometimes, because I don't know, and if you can need to get back to me, that's great too, is just because students have devices doesn't mean they have access to Wi-Fi technology. So one of my things that I'm about is making sure that, I like the idea of schools as hubs for Wi-Fi. Like I can go to anywhere in the city and log into Comcast and get Wi-Fi. So I'm just kind of curious what we've been doing for Wi-Fi for support for students and families who don't have access. Because I'm really not aware and that wasn't mentioned.
I appreciate the question, Director Benno. So we as a team have done several things in that space. We've purchased about fifteen hundred hotspots in addition to the five hundred hotspots that we have. We've distributed about eighteen hundred of those up to this point. And we've also made the OSPI's K-12 Internet Access Program available to all of our families through information. And then we're also going to be taking advantage of the new broadband relief fund, Emergency Broadband Relief Fund that's recently been released by the FCC and getting that information out to families as well. We do agree that, that the direct connection internet access is a big challenge for a lot of districts. We did a lot of research before we determined how many we would purchase so that we used census data from twenty eighteen as well as our family survey, our family technology access and readiness survey and other information to determine our, our total counts. So we continuously evaluate those things continuously to get that information out. But we did notice that our need was sporadic, right? So as in terms of today, we gave out eight hotspots today, right? At all of our, at all of our spots. And it's been trickling, which is a good sign, but we're anticipating that continuing. So there will be some time for us to continue to renew the hotspots that we purchased and the contracts and those types of things to make sure that we can continue.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Certainly.
I know that many, because I work in a different district, I know that many of my students would say that they would share a hotspot, but they would run out of data by the end of the month because there was three or four family members using it or they would use it to like watch TV or whatever later on. So like, has that been a concern? Is that something that we've had to deal with as well?
Yeah, so that was a concern early on. What we did was, we've been doing this daily review because we get reports when someone approaches or reaches their, their data limit. So we've been increasing those to higher limits, but also trying to replace those with some unlimited ones that we purchased after the fact. Because when we first received, we got our first batch of hotspots in March of twenty twenty, right? So it was a matter of who has them, let's get what we need. Once we got those, then we, some more programs started to come out, which actually provided unlimited, right? We were kind of roped into this two gigabit per, and that wasn't quite enough because that was meant to close the homework gap, but not meant to sustain remote learning, right? So we took advantage of more vendor relationships and purchased the T-Mobile hotspots and were able to expand our programs. And going forward, we're thinking that that'll be our partner in this space so that we can have unlimited for our students.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Christie, I have a couple of questions. First of all, and thank you to all of you for the overview. It was very informative and I appreciate that very much. And it's an area that I need to learn a lot more at. My son, his Mr. Computer Guru way up and I don't even begin to imagine what he does for a living. He tells me and I don't even know what he's talking about. But number one, I'd like to know if I could see an example of the PDF or template that you send out that the kids that you send out, that the kids or the teachers put together for the graduation, a different route to get to credits for graduation? You seem to think that was kind of a one thing that you sent out to the counselors and everybody so they can get credit in various ways. Could I possibly see an example of that template with nobody's name on it or anything? Just to see what it looks like?
So we just started the communication for that today. Once we have one, right, and start getting those out to families, we can make sure that you get one. Just so you can see an example. It won't be detailed because each one of those will be very specific to the students. But we'll make sure that you get a copy so that you can see an example of the language that's being used.
I appreciate that. So you do tailor it to each particular student, what kind of what they're presenting? Is that what I hear you saying?
Yep, because we're going to be working with the schools on that. So it'll be a combination of direct outreach and the letters. Right now, we anticipate the letters of having some information that's specific to the students, right? But we need to make absolute sure that we can keep some of that information protected as well. Again, since we just started the outreach portion today and started getting feedback from principals, that may change in the next couple of days. But at the very least, when we do a letter, we can make sure that we get you the information that's on that letter.
And in your research department, do I understand it correctly that that's where, when you want to purchase some new software or a new platform, that the research is done under that of why you would bring it forth to the district or to the board for approval to be, you know, purchased? Is that how that works? Or how do we, if we want to bring something in that's different in software, how does that process work? And how much research is done on the software? I mean, all these different softwares that we bring in. I mean, do we pilot them? Do we just buy them, or how does that work?
So it really depends on the software platform. There are some softwares like our HR, which is pretty comprehensive and it's a system thing versus teacher software, right? So for teacher software, we have a pretty extensive software review process that's documented. It has about nine steps that goes through the principal approval to approval by our group. We have a set of rubrics that walks through everything from cost to security to supportability, to efficacy for students. And that's a cross-functional team. So we have people on teaching and learning on that team as well as many members of our technology support team. So if it's a teacher application, it goes through the software review process. If it's a larger district application, usually those are presented to us by our communities, by other community partners. So they reach out to us, like if teaching and learning wants to do something or inclusive ed wants to do something, they'll reach out. We'll talk about requirements. We'll walk through requirements depending on the cost, right? We'll get bids, and then depending on the cost, do an RFP process, do a pretty extensive review with rubrics. Have a cross-functional team do the review so that we can make sure that we have as many voices as possible and then include all that in the bid process. So there's a couple of different ways that that happens and it depends on the type of software.
Do you...
Hopefully I answered your question.
Thank you. Do you by any chance, were you involved in the purchase of, say, Thought Exchange? I mean, how did that come to be in our district?
So I'm going to partially answer this question. My involvement was mainly from a review standpoint. And if I recall, and Melissa, please help me if I misspeak. There was a request from the school board to create a two-way communication tool that allowed us to be able to gather the thoughts of our community as part of a response based on the board at the time. So it was a board-approved platform. And we did, I did some technical review of the platform as well as, you know, learning to be trained on it to get an idea of, you know, security and those types of things. But to the best of my knowledge, because this was a couple of years ago, it was board-approved, board-recommended.
Did, um, do other school districts use Thought Exchange? Do you happen to know that?
Yes, a lot of other school districts do. My previous school district used Thought Exchange. I went to a Thought Exchange collaboration meeting a couple of years ago and there were several regional school districts there. And they all use it in varying ways, but they have some pretty good models and professional development on how a school district can and should use Thought Exchange. We've had a couple very successful Thought Exchanges in the last six months, which kind of modeled those.
And I have, my last question is, when you use the term E-Rate, how do we get this E-Rate? Can you explain that to me, when we get a reduction on cost?
So E-Rate is based on our free and reduced lunch percentage. And the FCC gives you a discount or reimbursement slash discount on equipment, network equipment, based on a couple of different categories. So with our free and reduced lunch count, we get a certain percentage and that's, percentage is reimbursed when we make these large purchases. That's why we were able to save so much, because I believe we get approximately between 16 and 80% savings for E-Rate.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you for the questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
First is, well, thank you to your team, Director Christie. And as always, I am incredibly impressed with everything you present. And I was particularly impressed with your presentation to our community in talking about digital equity. And I'm really happy that there was an opportunity for all of you to present because I feel like we have come so far from going beyond that one-to-one initiative. You know, just the entire coverage of what we do is just remarkable. I did have some specific questions on a couple of things I heard from... Sorry, I'm going to get the names right. Ms. Berkland and Ms. Bejarano? I hope I pronounced that right.
Bayorano.
And Bay...
Bayorano, yep.
Bayorano, thank you. And I'm sort of curious about the performance management system conversation or initiative and how it overlaps between both of your programs. I'm particularly interested in hearing how it covers other departments within the school organization, oh, sorry, within the central office and buildings in how we're managing different systems, you know, in HR, for example, or nutrition services, you know? How are we looking at efficiency and all of that when we say performance management systems?
So, one of the key thoughts behind, and Dr. Berkland did mention this, about researching what some of the best practices are in performance management systems. Part of it is coming up with a common set of ways to describe and explain data, right? At the school level, so that we can determine again where students are at any given, you know, moment in time as well as what we're doing to support students in that space. We, again, are at the very beginning stages of research and trying to come up with some commonalities. We had anticipated being able to do this a little bit earlier, but then the last 14 months happened. So it caused us to kind of reduce that because we were having to put more energy in surveys and such. So we're starting to, we're restarting that. Now, the difference between what Dr. Berkland described and what Joel Bayorano described is performance of systems like budget, policy, and the intersection between those two things and our work and the work that we do, as well as some of the higher-level understandings of, do our policies actually directly impact the way that we're able to implement, right? Implement support? Do our processes actually match what we're asking people to do? Does the software that we purchase detract from our core values, right? So some of that is embedded in this whole idea of innovation strategy and performance. One of the big things that Joel did not mention is the fact that her team does a lot of project management as well. So we've created project management toolkits to help to streamline the project process, which is back to the performance of the system. We don't waste energy doing a lot of extra tasks and such.
Tashan, I just want to say, I know we didn't have time to finish all of the questions. Make sure that Vice President Bettinger and President Daniels have an opportunity to submit their questions or at least email them so we can make sure they get answered as well at time, right now.
As we are at time. I know Vice President Bettinger put in the chat her thanks for an amazing presentation. And I would say the same, thank you so much. This was so informative. And so, thank you so much for all of this. It's a lot. And I just appreciate the way the district has stepped up and met the needs for our families and our students. So thank you so much. If we do have additional questions, we can just submit them via email. So at this time, we're going to adjourn the work session and we are going to enter an exempt session.
Well, it's everybody. Yeah, almost. All right. So, good evening. It is seven o'clock and I would like to call our meeting to order. I think we're way, oh, there we go. Okay. I think all board members are almost here. Missing Director Benham. Let's give him a moment to, there he is. All right. Wonderful. So, welcome. I'd like to call our board meeting to order. Vice President Benjer, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I'd like to welcome our audience to our meeting. At this time, I would like to introduce Lydia Fatilia. Is that right? Did I say that correctly?
Yes, she did. Thank you.
Yes, Program Manager for United Indians of All Tribes Foundation, to read us our land acknowledgement this evening. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Good evening, Kent School Board elected members, esteemed guests and community members. I want to acknowledge that we gather virtually today on the ancestral homelands of the Kosalish people in Mokushute Tribe, who have lived in the Salish Sea Basin and throughout the Pacific Northwest from time immemorial. We respect the Kosalish elders, past, present, and extend that respect to their descendants and all indigenous people. To acknowledge this land is to recognize its long history of oppression and our place in that history. It is to recognize these lands and waters and their significance for the people who lived and continue to live in this region, whose practices and spiritualities were and are tied to the land and the water, and whose lives continue to enrich and develop in relationship to the land, waters, and other inhabitants today. Territory acknowledgements are one small part of disrupting and dismantling colonial structures. I encourage the Kent School District Board members, the district and communities, to get in touch with the local indigenous nations or organizations to build relationships in support of the equity and diversity work in our communities throughout the state of Washington. Please join me in expressing our most profound respect and gratitude to the Mokushute and Kosalish people for their enduring care and protection of our land and shared waterways. Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to begin the process for audience participation. Welcome, everyone. This is a meeting of the Kent School District Board, which is held in public to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act. Our process for audience participation is as follows. The purpose of board meetings is for the board to conduct its business in public. During the meeting, the board will listen to but not respond to comments from the audience. Those wishing to comment must complete the online form as indicated on the district website and in board docs. Tonight, there will be two periods where public comment will be heard, at the beginning of the meeting and at the end of the meeting. Questions raised or submitted public comment addressing an issue may require further investigation and staff will contact you to follow up. If you indicated a desire to speak to an agenda item, your comment will be read at that portion of the agenda. General comments tonight will be read during the audience communication sections of the agenda. Dr. Watts, is there any change to the agenda?
President Daniels, thank you. There are no changes to tonight's agenda.
I sincerely apologize for my background. All right, at this time, do we have any, Ms. Zantella will read up to thirty minutes, thirty minutes of the comments received. Ms. Zantella, do we have any public comments for this evening?
Good evening, President Daniels and Vice President Benjer, members of the board, Dr. Watts and Ms. Howley. I would like to submit that for this April twenty eighth, twenty twenty one meeting, that no public comments have been submitted.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'll call on Dr. Watts to give a superintendent report.
Thank you, President Daniels. Again, members of the board, team, Ms. Howley, Ms. Zantella. I am pleased to share with you this evening several updates as we continue to balance our annual spring routine of bringing closure to this school year while simultaneously planning for our next school year. So, this week marks the third consecutive week that our students have had the opportunity, based upon family choice, to either return to in-person and remote or to return to remote learning only. This week also marks the tenth week of our students' participation in in-person athletic activities at the high school level. Now, as a reminder, that we are still living within a global health crisis. I know that is sometimes hard for us to remember, but I do want to make sure that we understand we are still living and working and teaching and learning within a global health crisis. During the same time period, we have had a total of ninety-five student cases of COVID reported to us across all grades and within twenty-nine of our forty-two schools. This includes students in both hybrid and remote learning and athletic activities. Now, this week, we had our first classroom closure due to COVID nineteen, and we know that local and county levels of COVID nineteen cases continue to rise. And since the beginning of the school year, we have had seventy-two staff cases of COVID nineteen reported. Now, these figures include staff who have self-reported their positive cases and also represent staff who are working in-building and working remotely. Now, knowing and reviewing these data is crucial for several reasons. First, I provide this information to remind us all, again, that even with the adherence to safety measures where we live, work, learn, and play, again, the COVID nineteen virus is still very much active in our community. Secondly, I want to continually recognize the outstanding efforts of our building leaders and our staff who have prepared our schools for reopening. And also, those who continue working diligently to keep our schools safe in the midst of our global health crisis. Third, I want to specifically recognize our nurses and our health technicians who reside and certainly are taking care of our students and staff within our schools, who've also engaged in many hours of daily contact tracing and communication behind each positive case. Now, our hybrid learning model continues to present daily opportunities for collaboration, communication, leadership, and partnership. And I cannot stress enough that we must all do our part to remain vigilant while the COVID nineteen virus continues to be a factor in our lives. Overall, our students and staff have done an outstanding job with physical distancing, with hygiene, and acting in a responsible manner since our school buildings reopen for limited in-person learning, athletics, and activities. And while I recognize these measures are new for students and can be challenging, we are all continuing to work together to adapt to them. And I want to thank our students. We thank our families and our staff members for reinforcing the importance of following our safety mitigation protocols. Now, as a reminder, the key protocols that we've implemented in all of our buildings include: All students and staff members are required to wear masks or face coverings. Our teachers provide time for socially-distanced mask breaks as schedules allow. Now, our school staff also work with students and families to offer consistent reminders to students who may struggle with keeping their masks on during in-person learning. We have spaced out desks in classrooms to keep students separated whenever possible. And students should also avoid close contact with others, again, whenever possible. To avoid large groups of students gathering in one place, we have adjusted the way students move between classrooms and other spaces within our schools. Students and staff are frequently reminded about the importance of proper hand washing. And we've also placed hand sanitizer units throughout our buildings. All students and staff should continue to self-monitor for symptoms of COVID nineteen and complete the wellness form daily when entering school building or any building on Kent School District's campuses. Now, if a student or a staff member feels sick, they should stay home from school. They should also consult a healthcare professional right away and notify the school office. And we ask that all students carefully follow all of these procedures during the school day and when riding the bus to and from school. Now, of course, more information on the health and safety protocols are on our website, and we will continue to communicate with our families through our schools and our district reminders. Early in May, and it's hard for me to actually wrap my head around the fact that we are speaking about May, but early in May, we will be engaging with our back-to-school task force, with our labor leaders, our community partners, and the school board to gather input as we continue to prepare our academic and student well-being recovery plan. Now, this is a requirement of the state legislature and has a submission deadline to OSPI by June first. The goal of the plan is to identify which students and student groups may need additional academic and well-being supports, define how those supports will be provided, and plan for recovery and acceleration of student learning and well-being over the summer into the fall and beyond. Now, we will ask students, families, and staff to share their voices about the effectiveness of the current strategies and the needs that exist to support our students' growth as well as their acceleration across fourteen grade levels as we build our plan to be presented to the board again at the end of May. Now, at this time, we continue to partner with King County Public Health for support with our confirmed and suspected COVID cases and decisions about classroom and school closure needs. As we plan for next school year, we will also continue to rely on guidance from the Washington State Department of Health and our state superintendent for safety guidelines that will allow us to welcome staff and students back to school this fall. Now, what does that mean? Our scheduled first day of school for grades one through twelve next year is August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Now, we do anticipate that new guidance will be shared with all districts in the coming weeks. This will inform what the school day will look like for us next year. And I realize that so many of us are looking forward to safely returning to an on-campus, face-to-face learning experience in fall of twenty twenty-one. And we will continue to provide as much information as possible to our current and our future students, families, and staff regarding the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year as it becomes available. So, once again, on behalf of Team KSD, I say thank you. Thank you to our students, our staff, our families, as well as our entire school community. More specifically, I thank you for your continued efforts to help us keep everyone safe and keep our schools open. I greatly appreciate your attention this evening, and this concludes my report. Thank you, President Daniels.
Thank you, Dr. Watts. At this time, we're on to Agenda Item four point zero, our legislative update. Director Ingrid Dussel, would you please begin?
Yes, thank you. I will begin by just stating that the twenty twenty-one regular session has adjourned, and there were several bills that we were following, the legislature, state legislature, that have been signed by our governor. So, I'll just begin by talking about some of those. First is our K through twelve safety and security services, providing K through twelve public school safety and security services by classified staff or contractors. That has been approved. Providing a safe learning environment for students with seizure disorders. Those are, that's another bill that was signed by Governor Inslee, along with establishing a building point of contact in all of K through twelve public schools for students in foster care. Some of the things we've already talked about were concerning the emergency waiver of graduation requirements, responding to the COVID nineteen, of course, the pandemic through the state actions supported by federal funding. Those are all, those all have been signed by Governor Inslee. Some things we were watching, and we were also very actively involved in the school lunch co-pay that was eliminating the lunch co-pays for students who qualify for reduced-price lunch. That has been delivered to the governor, and we expect that to pass as well, or for the governor to sign that as well. And then, as you know, developing the comprehensive school counseling programs was another huge one that WASDA and board directors really championed. School counseling programs, that was, that's also been delivered to the governor for his signature. And then, finally, Representative Gregerson's procuring supporting appropriate computers and devices for public school students and staff. Though we have the one-to-one devices in place, there are several other areas of broadband needs that we have, and the state budget was very, very generously supportive of broadband investments. And so, there is something called connectivity enhancements where they're including twenty-five dollars per student increase for technology beginning in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year to support broadband internet connectivity needs for the families. There are learning device grants, again, for the one-to-one device student ratio. Digital equity and inclusion efforts, including planning and technical assistance grants for community organizations, translation for outreach materials, and technical assistance. And then, finally, the community broadband planning. Components include additional staff at the state broadband office, the formation of a state broadband advisory group, facilitation of community broadband action teams, and data acquisition and analysis of broadband mapping. So, quite a bit of investments coming in for broadband. The big item is, of course, that we've been watching is State Senate Bill fifty-one twenty-eight that is touching on student transportation funds and the flexibility for qualifying transportation services during a future local, state, or national emergency. And so, this has passed, and it has been delivered to the governor. The district may use these transportation allocations to provide various expanded services to students regardless of whether those students would qualify as eligible students under our CWs. So, we can deliver educational services necessary to provide students with the opportunity to equitably access educational services during a period of remote instruction. We can deliver the delivery of meals, providing transportation of, for the transportation of students to and from learning centers or other public or private agencies where educational and support services are being provided. Those are all going to qualify under this transportation allocation and considered expanded services to students. So, a couple of other things to note, this twenty-five-dollar student increase again to the NSOC cost rate for technology. The, the continuation of the Para-educators Training Program with funding provided for two professional learnings days per year and the expansion of the Regional School Nurse Corps, which will allow all districts with fewer than two thousand students, it doesn't apply to us, but have at least one day per week of nursing support. So, there's quite a bit of concern also for other parts of the state where they have fewer students but also greater needs. And so, because the, the well-to-do districts also don't have Title I funds, there's quite a bit of concern about how they're going to meet. There are also, there are general fund needs moving forward. So, there'll be more discussions to come. I do want to finally talk about a couple of things coming up with, through WASDA. We have position proposals that WASDA is looking for. I had sent around an email to our board. These position proposals opened on March- These position proposals opened on March 15th, and they're going to close on May 14th. Have had a discussion with Dr. Watts about a couple of proposals. One in particular, actually, to talk about attracting, recruiting, and retaining diverse school board directors and increasing their access to run and serve. So, it's an interesting proposal that I have been talking to OSPI and have been discussing it since 2015, when Municipal League put out a proposal on this. But one of the things that Shoreline and North Shore have been discussing as well is this attracting and recruiting and retaining diverse school board directors and through compensation and various other services like childcare. We are drafting something as Boards of Color and as a couple of other board members are getting together on this. And we, I would like to bring forward something to the board, and I'll fill out a form to, for us to discuss this. But if you all have any proposal ideas, I would encourage you to put together a position proposal that we could discuss as a board, and then we can take that to other board members and get some proposal, position proposal partners as well. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, at this time, we are going into our proclamation. So, Director Benno, would you please read the proclamation for School Lunch Hero Day?
Of course, thank you. "School Lunch Hero Day. Whereas nutritious meals are an essential part of the school day, and given the current climate of both hybrid learning and remote learning, it is important to make sure students are given nutritious meals for the school day. And whereas the staff of the Kent School District's Nutrition Services Department are committed to providing healthful nutritious meals to the district's children, especially during this extraordinary time in history. And whereas the men and women who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their interaction and support during meal site distribution to students who learn both in a hybrid setting and remotely. And whereas the nutrition services staff are professionals who have risen above and beyond by helping to feed all children in our community since the pandemic began and will continue to distribute meals at meal site locations to students until it is safe for all students to physically return to school. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has created challenges and opportunities for nutrition services staff and the larger KSD community to accept the challenge of becoming school lunch heroes, now therefore, it be resolved, the Kent School District expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable employees and commends their good work on behalf of children and proclaims Friday, May 7th, 2021, a School Lunch Hero Day, signed this 28th day of April, 2021, by the Board of Directors and Dr. Watts."
Thank you very much. Would you like to say something, Ms. Fields?
Yes, I want to say thank you for that recognition and just to personally thank the exceptional Nutrition Services team for their dedication to this Kent School District. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you so much. All right, at this time, we're on to our Agenda Item 6, which are our presentations. And we are going to have a presentation on our 2021-22 recruitment plan. So, Dr. Wade Behringer, interim chief of Human Resources, Officer Joyce Wilson, Executive Director of Human Resources, and is it Thessala? Forgive me, I'm not sure the first name how to pronounce.
Thessala.
Thessala, thank you so much, Ms. Jones. Assistant Director of Employment Support, to begin the presentation, thank you.
Good evening, President Daniels, Vice President Benninger, members of the board, Dr. Watts, Ms. Holly, and Ms. Zantello. Thank you again for allowing us to present our annual hiring and recruitment plan. Tonight, you'll hear from two of our amazing HR leaders who live and breathe this work every day, Joyce Wilson, Executive Director of HR, and Thessala Jones, Assistant Director of HR. It's important to ground all of our work that we do in the Kent School District, as well as this presentation, and our core values of equity, excellence, and community. As an HR community, I've shared with you in our board updates our core beliefs, as well as our commitment statements in HR. Those beliefs and commitments are the foundation of successfully addressing our strategic goal number four, to recruit, hire, develop, and retain a diverse and premier workforce. This goal is also embedded in our Race and Equity Policy 1801. Recruit, hire, develop, and retain racially, linguistically, and culturally responsive personnel that over time will accurately reflect the student population served. This practice will ensure system accountability by recruiting and retaining a diverse employee population. The KSD Planning and Steering Committee identified the following areas of focus for recruitment and hiring goals. When recruiting and hiring, we're consistently considering our internal leadership development, retention of all staff, and our partnerships with our universities, colleges, as well as the unique opportunities for advancement for our staff members. Our internal leadership development takes into consideration our succession planning, professional learning, evaluation process, and our onboarding process. Later in the presentation this evening, Thessala will be, Thessala will be sharing in more detail our plans for retention of all employees. In regard to our ongoing university and college partnerships to ensure opportunities for advancement for all staff, we'll be talking about including things like growing your own programs, student teachers, administrative internships, work with our substitutes, and alternative routes. At this time, I'd like to hand it over to our Executive Director of HR, Ms. Joyce Wilson.
Good evening, President Daniels, Vice President Benninger, members of the board, Dr. Watts, Ms. Holly, and Ms. Zantello. I am Joyce Wilson, Executive Director of Human Resources, and I appreciate the time that we're able to present the work of the Employment Support Team regarding hiring, recruitment, and retention. So, to understand how we developed the KSD recruitment plan for the 2021-22 school year, it's important that we look back to our recruitment and hiring of last year to give context on how recruitment has changed with the pandemic and how that has impacted KSD's hiring for the 2021 school year. As we begin to plan for KSD's recruiting and hiring season, to help us develop a strategic plan, we take a look at our current workforce demographics. This graph shows an overall increase of our staff of color for all of our labor groups. We show an increase of staff of color from 21.2% in the 18-19 school year to an increase of 24% for the 19-20 school year. However, looking at the three-year trend for our certificated staff, we did go down slightly in our demographics of staff of color from 20.5% in the 18-19 school year to 19.3% for the 19-20 school year. In the most recent OSPI report card for the 19-20 school year, it shows that for teachers, 86.8% of all teaching staff in the state of Washington are white, compared to just under 80.7% for KSD teaching staff who identify as white for the same school year. So, we're a little bit above the average. But we're also closely aligned to staff diversity to our surrounding school districts. However, we do recognize that there is still work to be done and continue to seek ways to ensure our workforce more closely reflects our student population. When forecasting recruitment needs, staff age is an important figure as it helps to forecast potential attrition. The average age of all of our staff is 45.7 years. There are approximately 223 KEA staff members who are at the age of retirement. And we also see an upward trend for KEA staff who are now between the ages of 20 to 29. So, this shows that KSD has a multigenerational workforce and also an aging workforce with an overall rate of 17.8% of all of our staff, staff groups who are at an age where they would have the potential to retire. We now have five generations working together, which has provided us a different kind of workforce diversity, and it demonstrates the multiple different ways our staff is diverse. As we connect back to the Human Resources Goal Four, we are seeking diverse and premier candidates to join our team. In our search for candidates, we are looking for those that share our core values of equity, excellence, and community, not just in words, but in their practice. More than anything, the KSD candidate views diversity as an asset and recognizes that we all have biases that need to be checked and addressed. It's not easy work, but it needs to be done, and we need candidates who are willing to do that work with us. We are seeking candidates that are fully trained and certified in the field that they're hired to teach. Early recruitment and hiring is essential in getting our vacancies filled with qualified candidates. And finally, community, we can't do it alone. We are seeking candidates who are solution-focused, who can work effectively with colleagues and community, and represent the diverse work, the diverse experiences, backgrounds, and perspectives. Our screening and interviewing questions also are designed to speak to these core values. Due to the pandemic, recruiting for 2020 had challenges that required action and strategies. In March of 2020, during the height of our recruitment season, COVID arrived. KSD had only been able to attend nine of the nineteen scheduled in-person career fairs, as all in-person career fairs were canceled. Unemployment soared, fear, isolation, uncertainty of staffing, along with learning how to navigate a new normal of virtual and remote work were challenges that the Employment Support Team had to overcome. The Employment Support Team quickly acted to these challenges. The team pivoted by researching nationwide virtual career fairs that we previously had not considered, but now we could attend. We stayed connected with universities, both in Washington State and throughout the U.S. to gain access to their graduates so that we could virtually interview candidates who were interested in joining Team KSD. Additionally, we leveraged our social media presence, developed processes and protocols for virtual interviewing, and then we trained a cadre of KSD leaders to be virtual recruiters for the district. This helped them to learn a new way to connect with potential candidates. These actions and strategies early on during the pandemic provided success for Team KSD. We had the highest vacancy fill rate in five years. We had trained building leaders and HR staff in virtual recruiting. And so, as we moved into this recruiting season, KSD was already experienced and ready to be successful as virtual recruiters. During the hiring season for 2020, the HR team was busy. Team KSD had significant interest from potential candidates of all job categories from across the nation. This data reflects that KSD truly has a nationwide reach to interested candidates. It also reflects the continued and persistent efforts of our out-of-state recruiting from Team KSD, both in 20-year, 2020, and in prior years. The data also reflects that the only out-of-state, in-person recruitment career fair that KSD was able to attend in 2020 prior to the pandemic was in Illinois. We had 49 applicants, and we actually were able to hire two individuals from those Illinois career fairs. This shows the impact of out-of-state recruiting for our district in recruiting diverse and high-quality candidates. Oregon and Texas were also states that we were able to attend a virtual career fair in the spring of 2020, and the data reflects interest of candidates from those states as well. Another interesting data point of our candidate pool is to look at the colleges that our candidates come from. This data indicates the number of applicants per college or university. And again, it highlights colleges and universities that we regularly recruit from both in-state and out-of-state. The number of the, the high number of the other category are colleges and universities that the talent ed application system doesn't immediately recognize the university and their configured database. For certificated hiring of 2020-2021, we show a four-year trend of the number of certificated positions hired. For last school year, we had 264 certificated hires. This number reflects the strong recruitment and fulfillment of special education and ESA positions that we were able to fill with staff hires versus agency hires, as well as we added additional staffing to accommodate enrollment in a few of our buildings. During the hiring season of 2020, from June to September, this graph shows the number of classroom vacancies, shown in orange, and the number of teaching positions filled, shown in blue. The gray line across is a percentage of classroom positions filled during the hiring months of June through September. As you can see, our progress went from 44.87% in June to 96.06% in classroom positions that were filled as of September 30th, 2020. So, understanding where we were last year with KSD recruiting and hiring during a pandemic will now help us understand where we are with recruitment for our 2021-2022 school year. I'd like to introduce Thessala Jones, Assistant Director of Employment Support, to present the recruitment plan for KSD for our upcoming school year.
Thank you, Joyce. Before digging into the recruitment plan, it is important to look at where we are currently while, with recruiting, while continuing to navigate through the pandemic. COVID-19 continues to present several pros and cons for our recruiting efforts. We continue to attend virtual recruitment events, and the number of these type of recruiting platforms continue to grow, providing us with numerous opportunities to instantaneously connect with candidates. However, these virtual recruitment events have limitations in that they provide venues for passive recruiting. The virtual recruiter has limited ability to pursue potential candidates who have not already expressed an interest in KSD. On the upside, having the ability to continue our hiring during these times continues to be beneficial in filling our positions, especially for our classified positions. And this is reflective in our pools, which have benefited from the high unemployment rates. Despite the high unemployment rate, though, resulting from the pandemic, we continue to experience the teacher shortage here in Washington, especially for teachers of color. Our current state reflects the low turnover rate for KSD. However, the possibility for attrition rates to grow remains within our purview and is a strong part of our strategic retention plan. Where establishing rapport with candidates during the in-person recruitment process has been somewhat easy for recruiters, our current virtual format, which is projected to continue to be a recruitment option of the future, poses a bit more difficulty for the virtual recruiter to establish the rapport and connection with candidates and vice versa. Here, looking at our KSD recruitment strategies, Human Resources recruits year-round for positions through a variety of recruitment strategies to ensure that KSD is attracting high-quality talent. For the 2021-2022 school year, we will be implementing recruitment efforts that will source for internal, active, and passive job seekers. Candidate pools, in candidate pools, referral candidates, active candidates, and passive candidates. These are candidates, passive candidates especially, are candidates who are not actively searching for a new employment opportunity, but when sourced through social media or another form of virtual recruiting, when presented with a new job opportunity, they would consider leaving their current position for a new position with KSD. Our six major recruitment strategies are listed here and explained in the recruitment plan. However, we will focus tonight on internal pipelines, sourcing strategies, career fairs, and virtual recruiting. KSD has three major internal pipelines that help us in the recruiting of staff. Those pipelines include classified to certificated, such as Grow Your Own Alternative Routes to Certification. Provides, this provides alternative pathways and opportunities to classified staff to participate in college cohorts to earn their teaching certificate. And for the 2020-2021 school year, KSD had 26 employees begin in one of our alternative route programs. Student teachers and admin interns are a significant pipeline of aspiring educators and leaders for KSD. KSD has developed a robust student teacher program, admin intern program, and ESA internship programs. For the 2020-2021 school year, KSD has placed 87 student teachers in 32 school sites. Substitutes are an important pipeline, excuse me, important pipeline is potential permanent employment for both certificated and classified positions. For the 2020-2021 school year, we hired 27 certificated substitutes and into permanent teaching positions and 14 classified substitutes into permanent positions.
A key piece of the recruitment process and the search for quality candidates is sourcing. Recruitment sourcing is identifying viable candidates based on a hiring need and is composed of multiple candidate sourcing techniques typically used in combinations to maximize results. Our KSD database or our talent ed application system is a quick way to source for applicants for a specific need. It targets both active and passive job seekers. Social media platforms are also very effective to source for high- Social media platforms are also very effective to source for high-quality candidates, and LinkedIn has become the most effective and popular method of sourcing for both passive and active job seekers. The Title II website gives an overview of the United States by individual state colleges and university teaching programs. We can obtain information regarding these teaching programs to determine the ethnicity of their students, the endorsements earned, and how many program completers for the state and university that they have. This provides valuable information in determining which states or regions of the country would be effective for KSD to recruit from. We post online job posting boards to various colleges and universities, also professional association websites and social media job boards. And they are great and effective for sourcing those active job seekers who are looking to make a change in their employment. Additionally, passive job seekers may see a job board and become interested in positions as well. Thus, this method has the ability to target and source for both passive and active job seekers. All of our KSD jobs are posted on Indeed, LinkedIn, and K-12 Top Jobs. Depending on the position, we also post on other appropriate association websites to target the appropriate candidate and gain visibility. Employee referrals, although this is an old-school method of sourcing candidates, it's still actually one of the most effective recruitment strategies. As we partner with our community in communicating our hiring needs, we can obtain employee referrals. The best place to find more high-quality candidates, like those we just hired, is to ask those individuals if they know of others who are ready for a change. Everyone is a recruiter for Team KSD.
When we speak of virtual recruiting now, it encompasses more than just in-state and out-of-state recruitment career fairs. It includes opportunities to use various virtual venues to provide on-the-spot interviewing, interviews, and network, networking opportunities. Virtual recruiting now also speaks to the leveraging of social media platforms, such as LinkedIn, Microsoft Teams, Zoom, and other outside virtual recruitment platforms to hold KSD recruitment events. We actively support, partner, and attend career fairs with all the major universities in the state of Washington, as a majority of new hires comes from these recruitment efforts. We do experience success, however, when competing with two hundred and eighty-five school districts for the candidates from these universities and recruitment events. For the 2021, 2022 recruitment season, many Washington colleges and universities opted to not hold a virtual career fair, and therefore, there was a decrease in the usual career fairs that we would normally attend in state.
As we recruit for diversity, it is important that Team KSD attends both in-state and out-of-state recruiting events. This is essential to attract diverse, high-quality talent. We all know how important it is for all students to have an educational environment that includes a racially diverse staff. There is significant research that indicates a diverse teaching workforce is beneficial to all students. Therefore, it is important that KSD go outside of the state of Washington to recruit and attract teachers of color. Edweek Top Job Schools conducted a survey in which respondents indicated that Black educators are significantly more willing than other ethnicities to relocate if the right opportunity was offered. Additionally, Washington State has a growing teaching shortage. There is a lack of teaching program completers versus the number of teachers needed to fill classrooms. This has led to the high number statewide of conditional certifications. Due to the lack of teachers completing teacher programs from Washington State universities versus the numbers, the number needed to fill classrooms, competition amongst school districts has become fierce. The state of Washington has passed legislation to help address the barriers for teachers of color to enter the profession of education by removing basic skills tests and allowing reciprocity between states for teacher certification. This research substantiates the importance of attending career fairs and other recruitment events outside of our state. With virtual recruiting, Team KSD can now attend career fairs nationwide from the comfort of their home, targeting candidates from out-of-state universities as well as attending career fairs that are targeted for educators of color. Retention plays a key role in our recruitment plan. Just as everyone is a KSD recruiter, all of us have a role to ensure the retention of our staff. To develop a successful, successful retention plan, Human Resources looked at important key data points of retention of our overall staff and by labor group and then by demographic. For our overall retention rate, the data is based on the number of KSD employees who were working at KSD as of October first of each school year. The ratio is determined based on the number of employees who remained compared to the overall number of employees over the course of a school year. For example, there were three thousand four hundred and seventy-four total staff on October first, 2019, with a ninety percent retention rate. Three thousand one hundred and twenty-six staff members were retained throughout the 2019, 20 school year and were counted on October first, 2020. October one was the chosen date. It's based on reporting practices to OSPI. The number of employees counted in the retention calculation includes all employees except substitutes, temporary employees, and seasonal coaches. In order to calculate the ratio, the final number of retained employees must be known for each school year. The retention rate for the 2021 school year is currently unknown because the school year is not yet finished. The retention rate for the 2021 school year will be available after September thirtieth, 2021.
When looking at this diagram, it's important to note the labor groups. The labor groups were identified based on staff members' employment type description in Skyward. The data for this dashboard comes directly from Skyward, so staff have not self-identified their labor group. Labor group retention is based on the number of employees retained through employment at KSD and union membership. For example, if a para educator became a teacher between 2018 and 2019, and 2019, 2020, then they would not be considered as retained as a para educator in the 2019, 2020 school year. AFT includes all maintenance and custodial staff. KAP includes all office professionals. KAP includes all para educators. KPA includes all principals and assistant principals. KEA includes all staff with a teacher description, though this does not, excuse me, though this does include guidance counselors. KSFSA includes all food service workers. Teamsters includes all bus drivers. Finally, non-represented staff includes administrators, cabinet, and professional technical staff. Staff who do not fit into these categories, including coaches, substitutes, temporary staff, agency staff, unclassified staff, and retired staff are excluded from this view. This chart reflects retention for all KSD employees except substitutes, temporary employees, and seasonal coaches. There is no differentiation here between teachers, administrators, and classified staff members. For the not-provided demographic, this represents very few staff members. For two of the school years, it is at a hundred percent that shows one staff member. Although our retention rate for our staff who identify as Black has been historically lower than our staff who identify as white, our HR team has developed some retention strategies to address, help in retaining our staff of color moving forward. In anticipation of fewer opportunities to pursue traditional in-person recruitment methods, the Employment Support Team continues our shift to virtual recruitment through ongoing review of the candidate's journey across the hiring process to assess roadblocks, equity and resource challenges, and engagement adjustments necessary to attract diverse candidate pools that are already experiencing shortages. An essential part of addressing the candidate's journey across the hiring process is assessing the preboarding, onboarding, and long-term status of our newly hired employees, as well as evaluating the retention efforts and retention rates of our current talent. These needed evaluations will be accomplished through the following strategic goals. Increasing the conduction of stay and exit interviews. Excuse me, assists. This assist in retaining and celebrating talent increases engaged workforces as well as provides organizations with the opportunity for developing growth based on feedback, prevention of bad hires, and promotes transparency. Second, establishing district-wide affinity groups and ERGs. These provide continued opportunities for organizational development. It also allows organizations to identify gaps in business strategies. And increased awareness of employee needs for their employer of choice. Opportunities to be included and supported as professionals in education. Performing long-term quarterly surveys provide additional opportunities for feedback in assessing their current state. Developing onboarding processes that go beyond their first year and include programs such as mentorship, alumni networks, and support and connect opportunities will be an essential part of this goal. Succession planning strategies, such as providing professional development and training for leaders and how to retain their staff, this will also be an important goal. These retention strategies will help Team KSD attract more diverse candidates, reduce turnover, and increase employee morale. Establishing norms, expectations, and clear goals for each of these strategic initiatives will require departmental management liaisons and expertise in anti-discrimination and implicit bias training. Excuse me, KSD. The KSD team leadership will be necessary for counteracting organizational biases and helping everyone feel included. All of this will require planning and ongoing participation from the KSD team. While the Employment Support Team may lead some of these strategic initiatives that will require cross-department collaborations to continually provide a healthy and thriving workplace culture. Now, we'd like to go ahead and open the floor for questions.
I have a question, actually. I noticed, so, do you keep track of the amount, the number of applicants of color that apply? And then, do you have any way to kind of compare or correlate those with the number that are hired?
So I can answer that, President Daniels. It's really hard in applications because you, many people do not want to self-identify in the application process for fear of discrimination. So that's, it's not really an accurate way in which for us to track that data from application to hire. So it's really more who we hire versus, you know, tracking it from application to hire because so many don't self-identify on the application process.
And so the follow-up question to that is, so thinking about how you're actively recruiting and communicating the message about increasing the diversity of your, of your workforce. Are there, so maybe, how is that message shared then? Because I would, I would think that that might encourage people to apply if they know that's the goal, or I'd encourage people maybe to identify. And then, are there, do you incorporate questions around equity practices, cultural responsiveness in the interview questions? How is that incorporated? Or do you, how do you share that message, I guess, during the interview process?
Yes, nearly every interview, especially the admin interviews that I participate in, they always have an equity question involved in that process. So, and then it's also very messaged through our recruiting. Whenever we're out there recruiting, it's part of our recruitment materials that we have, part of our recruitment talking points that we give to our virtual recruiters. So it's very much messaged from the beginning to all the way through the interview process and beyond.
Thank you very much.
I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure.
Um, my first question is, I noticed that in your slides, you talked about different ways you recruit educators, like through student teachers and substitutes, et cetera. And I know I've asked this question before, but I'm just going to put it out in the universe. Have we in our district thought about doing a teacher academy-type program in our high schools in conjunction with CTE program? I, I know it's high school level, but to convince teachers to come back or students to come back as teachers in the district?
Uh, yes, so there is a program out and it's supported by PEPSPY, the Professional Educator Standards Board, and it's called Recruit Washington Teachers. And we have an active group that we're meeting, trying to establish that program. It takes a lot of cross-collaboration and different processes, but we are working towards that, hopefully for the future.
Excellent. I also noticed in your recruiting at a state, I'm really curious, I don't see any historically Black colleges or universities on that list. Has it been a thought or a question to recruit at teacher education programs at HBCUs?
Yes, we actually did. My first year here, we did recruit at a historical Black college in Virginia. But, you know, now with virtual recruiting, it's, it's just dependent on if they hold a virtual career fair, as we're not flying out there to their colleges to actually see there. So it's, it's a little bit different. Now, a lot of the colleges are combining into one big recruitment fair. And, you know, they're, so they're kind of doing it by region. So even the historical Black colleges are doing the same. They're just kind of all getting into one big, you know, recruitment platform of recruiting. So virtual recruiting is a little bit different now than it is in person.
Thank you so much. And the, the last thing I just kind of thought about, it's not really a question, but it's something I could talk about at a different time. But it's just thinking about, as we've talked about equity, and we talked about majority of the staff being white, and for looking at, a lot of educators of color may not feel comfortable environments where there's a lot of white educators because of fear of discrimination or prejudice or racism. Is there any thoughts of, or actions of how we're going to make sure that our district is practicing equity and making sure equity is in our hiring practices and our trainings, et cetera? I know that's a big question you probably can answer now, but it's a thought that I'm having as we talk about recruiting, retaining educators of color. I feel like that there has to be some conversation about making sure that the spaces that they're coming into are going to be respectful, safe spaces for educators of color that are coming into the district as well. So that's a big question, I know, but I just want to put it out in the universe.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that question. It's definitely a big question, and it's definitely, I think, in all of our conversations as HR leaders and all the work that we do, from recruiting to hiring to interview, interview questions. That's where we use the district's equity lens a lot in what we do to ensure that and to ensure the work. But it is, it's, please know it is a conversation. It's more than a conversation. It's actually, we're putting a lot of things in, in practice, especially this year, with our retention strategies in which to make, ensure that our educators of color are feeling comfortable in the, in that space.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your answers, and thank you for all your work on this. This has been a great presentation.
Yeah, Joyce, I just wanted to add something, if that's okay.
Yeah, thank you, Thessla.
I wanted to add, that's why it's essential to have these support and connect affinity groups and ERGs so that there is an overall message from KSD to our educators of color, that there is a safe space, there is a place to have discussions around equity and experiences that they may be encountering, and then the ability to have action items behind that. What they can do with those feelings, what they can do with what they're experiencing, and how we can support our educators of color.
Love it. Thank you.
I'm kind of curious about the stay and exit interviews, how that is also transforming during these times and from years past in that I know we've had staff members from other departments participate in this. So there is a sense that it's not just HR, but it's a collaborative effort in gauging, you know, how our environment is. Has anything changed this past year, this year, in how we're going to be conducting those interviews?
Uh, yeah, Thessla, do you want to take that one on, or?
I'm sorry, sure. I just was kind of laughing in the respect that one changes that you have fresh eyes. I have no history here with KSD, but I have a lot of experience in the stay and exit interviews and the value that they can bring, bring to an organization. So I can't speak historically about how they've been conducted and utilized within the system. But I can tell you that we have a fresh, exciting team, Employment Support Team, that's looking forward to taking on this work.
um, that's looking forward to taking on this work and making sure that the feedback that we get from the stay and exit interviews will be incorporated to the best of our abilities throughout KSD. So like, that's one thing I can provide.
Yeah, and I also wondered about that I, our IT presentation, our work session and um, so much of that data gathering that they're doing. Um, they talked about surveys and putting those out. So, um, I also think about the educations, educators of color and how, and if we are gauging um, regular feedback from them uh, in collaboration with their performance management groups or innovation strategy groups.
Yeah, actually, we are partnered with DARTS right now. We, they're the, they've actually provided us a lot of the data for recruitment plans. So they, our DARTS team have been amazing to work with and we plan to continue that collaboration and partnership in order to gather and survey just exactly what you're saying to help us um, to have a better focus, to be able to support our educators of color and to be able to retain and recruit educators, educators of color as well.
I just want to add that the collaborations that I've already experienced in a month and a half um, are exciting and encouraging and it's great to work with so many different teams already. And so I think we, we're just going to keep moving forward in this positive collaborative method.
I just want to add briefly to that, Director Engadossalom. Um, in that we've reached out and had conversations with our educators of color network here in Kent um, and are working to bring several of uh, those members into the fold, into our work with recruitment. Um, as, as well as leaning on them to support us in our affinity groups as we broaden that work, um, moving into next year on our onboarding process. There's been a, a level of interest from our educators of color network to support in not only increasing um, the hiring of our educators of color, but also retaining them. And so what better way to do that than to utilize our educators of color that are right here appreciating and enjoying their work in KSD and having them uh, support us in HR as we support our new employees in their positions through affinity groups as well as um, just creating that sense of belonging uh, within the district. So, yes.
Thank you.
I have one question and I might have missed it. Uh, and you might have gone over it, but do we know how many overall Kent School District graduates or have ever been employed by us?
That, that's a great question. Um, I don't, I don't have that off the top of my head. I don't, I don't have that. We always do in all of our new employee orientations, we're always asking if, you know, who's a KSD graduate? And we always have several that raise their hands. So I do know we do employ quite a few just from the time that I've been with the district and have done new employee orientations. But I don't know if we've actually tracked that data, but that's a great thing for us to start tracking. So thank you for that.
And I just wanted to say thank you for this detailed report. It's pretty interesting to see the retention rates and all that. It's, it's very helpful. So thank.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions and, um, welcome Ms. Jones to the district. I didn't realize, I, I knew you were new, but I didn't realize it was like what you said a month and a half. So that's exciting. Um, so when I, when we, I think about the stay interviews and the exit interviews, um, do you have reports that, that gather that data? Are there common themes you're seeing that drive your work?
Well, that, Bessel is new. She's, she's only been here a month and a half. And we are redeveloping those stay and those exit interviews. We do see, um, in the past, we can go back and look and see from the exit interviews for sure, some common themes and trends. Uh, but we are in the process of redeveloping a, a lot of new questions or, you know, getting, getting to what we really need to, what we really need to find out. So it's a, a brand new work and process as we have a whole new employment support team.
Mm-hmm. Awesome. So yeah, so, oh, sorry.
Oh, I was just saying, Vice President Benninger, just to add to that piece. Um, I think it's important to note that in previous years of stay interviews and exit interviews, that as a system, we really want to create a culture that, um, uh, allows people to feel comfortable to share their views in a stay interview or an exit interview. And so, uh, we're looking at that, we've been looking at and adjusting that process because the return rate for either on stay interviews or exit interviews have just not been that strong. And so we're looking at what kind of environment do we need to create? Where it'll entice people to actually share uh, and be vulnerable in that sharing so we can grow as an organization um, and, and create additional supports for, for others through the stay interview process as well as the exit interview, exit interview process as well.
So, you know, put it on my little HR hat. Um, we used a third-party vendor to do that work. So people felt completely comfortable and it was completely anonymous for both of those, um, processes. Um, so one of my questions too, when we talk about retention, um, is, um, and just new employees coming from different states. Something that struck me is do we offer any kind of, um, support to like even drive new employees around the area to show them, you know, here's, here's local apartments and things like that. I know some, um, businesses do that, that they welcome new people new from out of state. So have we considered or do we do anything like that? Um, even maybe with the affinity groups where we, um, you know, just give, give our new hires kind of the lay of the land in the Kent School District?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that question, Vice President Benninger. Prior to the pandemic, um, I personally took many candidates around who had, like, they will rec, we recruit them in March and April and they'll come visit us in, you know, their spring break in mid-April and they come visit. We, I've driven them around. I have had them visit schools, um, kind of show exactly the lay of the land. Um, we also, uh, I know KEA also has a great, uh, program in which once we hire people from out of state, they have, um, they kind of wrap themselves around those people and help them as well. So, um, with the pandemic, it's a little, it's been a harder, right? But, um, when we are in person, we definitely always offer that and let them know, you know, that we're willing to do that.
Right. Cause I know that, you know, again, you know, there even just like a little booklet that's like, here's the local DMV because you're going to have to get a new license and here's the, here's, you know, the, just different resources that all come, they're part and parcel to moving to a new state or even a new portion of the state. If we have people that come from, you know, Eastern Washington or Southern Washington or things like that. So, um, I was just wondering if we employ any of those strategies to, as far as welcoming and recruit retention?
Yeah, most definitely. We do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. It was very informative. Looking forward to hearing more about it next year. We probably have a lot more data to share. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to our items for discussion and approval agenda, item number seven. Um, the first thing is agenda number 7.01, our resolution number 1604, the extension of the 2020-2021 General Fund and Transportation Vehicle Fund Budgets. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve 7.01, resolution number 1604, extension of 2020-2021 General Fund and Transportation Vehicle Fund Budgets.
I second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing them, I'll call for the vote. Call those in favor of approving agenda item 7.01, resolution number 1604, extension of 2020-2021 General Fund and Transportation Vehicle Fund Budgets. Please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye. Aye. Those opposed indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Are there any extensions? Motion carries. 7.02, our 2021-22 Student Learning Technology Refresh. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve 7.02, 2021-2022 Student Learning Technology Refresh.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I always have questions about microcomputer systems. I, I was very happy to see that, that super expensive arrangement with Absolute. I think someone mentioned in the earlier report was going away. Um, so, uh, I, I did ask questions about this prior to the meeting and in the two-by-two agenda review. So, um, I asked if we've reviewed any other vendors other than microcomputer systems? And the answer was that Intel, it expires and a new inter-local agreement offers better pricing. So my follow-up question to that is when does the microcomputer systems agreement expire?
Mr. Christie is available or, or if not, we can certainly find out that information.
And again, that's, I didn't ask it initially. So if, if, if Mr. Christie doesn't have that immediately, just a general idea, is it, you know, did we just enter in a new agreement or is it? Or getting the information later? Like I said, it wasn't one that I asked before the meeting. So.
No, absolutely. Thank you, Vice President Benninger. We'll take note of that question and there are several opportunities, whether it's an update or an email communication. We'll get that, uh, appropriate response to you as soon as, as possible.
All right, I have a question for point of clarification. On the quote Q27845 invoice, uh, the first line item there, um, which the price is 659 per quantity for 4,573 to the grand total there. Are those new or are those gently used? I had some confusion on that.
Uh, thank you for the question, Director Mata. Um, those are all brand new. Those are all new devices.
And that would be like, okay. And on these new devices with your, you know, the program you presented with the E rebates, we don't get any E rebate, rebates on any of this, right? Because of.
Correct. E-rate is limited to networking gear and networking infrastructure.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and I just, uh, I had some more questions. I just, again, I'm just, I just, because there's a long history with microcomputer systems and I just, uh, it just concerns me, just, it's just going back, I, you know, watching it over the years and it just, that company, there's something that makes me uncomfortable about that company. So is there anything you can tell me that would make me feel more comfortable about microcomputer systems?
So I will make a best effort at that. I can't say that it will give you comfort, but at least it's, it's an answer to the, the question that I believe you asked. So as a value-added reseller, um, MicroK12 has served as a partner for some time, right? In any endeavor as large as our one-to-one program, it's important to have someone that understands the long-term plans that you have as a district and then can pivot when plans change. They did a lot of pivoting for us and with us in partnering over the last 14 months and prior, you know. So, um, as part of that long-term partnership, just, um, similar to, um, if you have a partnership with, um, someone you purchase a car from, right? You have a long-term relationship. They start to understand what they sold to you, um, help you with purchasing, um, you know, additional, but also help you with fixing what you purchased. It's, um, it's very important to establish those long-term partnerships with purchases that are so large and a program with so many moving parts. So it's part, a partnership that's part of the inter-local agreement, right? Um, and then once we establish that partnership, it's this long-term, ongoing, understands us and the work that we do. So I don't know if that helps, um, but as part of the inter-local and the NASPO purchasing, um, we can take part of the, uh, the cooperative and then, um, continue that. But we will be doing in RFI again, um, relatively soon to see what else is out there, right? Um, and to reevaluate our partnerships as, um, is necessary. Uh, because sometimes when partners get a little too comfortable, then, you know, we start to have less service, which hasn't been the case with MicroK12. But we want to do, um, we want to make sure that we follow our, our normal process.
And this is going to be another follow-up question that I will totally understand because it's new tonight if you don't have an answer immediately. Um, are you aware how many other local districts use MicroK12? Do you have any concept idea?
So I know that, um, in the small, uh, well, I wouldn't even call it small, in the, the network that I have, um, a lot of my colleagues use MicroK12 because again, they're one of the larger, um, value-added resellers in the region. So at the level that they purchase at, they can get significant cost reductions for the things that we purchase.
So, and one more question. So when you say, um, resellers, is, is, are there other districts that go directly to, say, HP? Or things like, I know we're getting some devices from Microsoft, um, things like that. So there are there other districts that go directly to the source to HP or, or Dell or whatever commuter, computer IBM? I don't know.
I, I would say probably like 15 years ago, that was the case. But what started to happen was again, the cooperative purchasing as well as being able to take advantage of the larger, um, the larger contracts that were at the state and regional level. Um, made it to where the, uh, the larger companies like the HP, Dell and Lenovo's started working directly with you to create the relationship, but through a value-added reseller so they can do the extra things like delivery, um, white glove service, um, refreshing machines, um, and then those types of things. So again, the value added allows all the other extra pieces. And most school districts use that, right? Unless you're doing a really small purchase, then they might go directly to, um, just to get like, you know, a hundred or so. But since we work in the, the thousands, it works a lot better for us to deal directly with the value-added reseller.
Thank you. Very helpful.
So Mr. Christie, the cooperative purchasing agreement, um, getting back to Vice President, uh, Benninger's question on having an agreement with microcomputer, that would be the non-existent, right? Because we're going strictly to the cooperative purchasing agreement and for the value added seller.
It, so MicroK12 is one of the vendors that can participate as part of that. Um, some of the others are, um, SHI or, um, you know, STS or some of these other companies that are similar in size and scope. But when we do, you know, quotes, uh, MicroK12 normally comes out on top as far as a price.
Yeah, but we wouldn't have a direct agreement with them because we're going through the purchasing agreement.
Correct, yes.
But we did with the Absolute software that ended.
The Absolute software was, wasn't directly with Absolute. It was with, through Micro, again, as a value-added reseller. So similar to HP, if we wanted to purchase Dell or Lenovo or anything else, we'd still be able to get those through MicroK12 because they can offer all of those products.
And just a follow-up question, Mr. Mr. Christie. Uh, uh, the quantity of 4,573 on this one invoice, do we rotate numbers? Cause obviously we have more students or more computers out in the field than that. Is there kind of a, it, like a four-year cycle that certain ones come on and are purchased and then we go to another 4,000 or whatever? Is, is that how that works?
Yeah, that's how that works. Cause this is to cover, um, next year's seventh, ninth and 10th graders. Um, and one of the reasons is that, um, I don't know if you recall, last year around this time, we were talking about the fact that we probably weren't going to be purchasing any until we understood what the learning models were and what we would be supporting. So we're also in, in addition to taking care of seventh, ninth and 10th, you know, trying to do some catch-up, right? So that's why this purchase and that, um, 4,000 again covers, um, this year's seventh, ninth and 10th graders. We mentioned earlier the K through two pilot that we're doing, um, at a couple of our different schools. Once we get the information back from that, you know, we might be purchasing, um, different K two that are age-appropriate devices. So we're working with teaching and learning. Um, we're doing some research, um, getting surveys from parents and such that are taking part of the, the pilot.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? All right. So hearing none, I'll call for the vote. I'll. All right. So hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All of those in favor of approving agenda items seven point zero two, the twenty 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 one, twenty two student learning technology refresh, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye. Aye. All those opposed indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any extensions? The motion carries. On to seven point zero three or twenty twenty one, twenty two warranties and services for complimentary devices. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve seven point oh three, twenty twenty one, twenty two warranties and services for complimentary devices.
I second.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? It's a hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving agenda items seven point zero three, twenty twenty one, twenty two warranties and services for complimentary devices, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Do any extensions? Motion carries. Seven point zero four Meadow Ridge Elementary Modular Furniture Contract to Verco Incorporated. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the Meadow Ridge Elementary Modular Furniture Contract to Verco Incorporated.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All of those in favor of approving agenda items seven point zero four Meadow Ridge Elementary Modular Furniture Contract to Verco Incorporated. Please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any extensions? The motion carries. We're on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone wants to pull from the consent agenda this evening? Okay, so then can I get a motion to approve agenda items eight point zero one through eight point zero five on our consent agenda?
I move that we approve items eight point zero one through eight point zero five on the consent agenda.
Hey, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving our consent agenda items eight point zero one through eight point zero five, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any extensions? The motion carries. There is information there, under informational learning technology to support hybrid scenarios. Was there any question or? We're on to our communication, to diet of number ten, our final communication from the audience. And it is correct, we did not have, just confirm, we did not have any comments, public comments this evening.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you, Ms. Santella. So now we will move on to our board reports and discussion. Who would like to begin?
I'll go first because I have a puppy here that's liable to start barking pretty soon and I have to go silent. I I just want to say some of the things I've been up to. On April fifteenth through sixteenth and seventeenth, I had the pleasure and the privilege because of my hours of work are very minimal anymore with being retired to attend the Kingmaker Spring Symposium. There are those three days, there was eleven point five hours actually of of time to be online and participate in this. And I just want to express to all you that the sessions were upbeat, lively, they will fill with art and music and meditation and yoga from a very diverse group of artists. And I do did really enjoy that. I was able to watch teachers in classrooms interacting with elementary school, middle school and high school, using some of the tools that they use through Kingmakers. And some of the things that stood out in that was I liked the circle of affirmation that they started with the elementary. And when the kids come in, they circle up and they all greet each other either with elbows touching or some of these other signs that they've gotten together, recognizing everybody that's in a classroom. So like, it'd be impossible for you to kind of hide in a corner. You're all greeting everybody. So I I just thought that was really cool for the kids. And they did that in other, you know, degrees in different age groups here that I watched. And the interaction with each other, it just it just had a great feeling. You could see that the kids kind of enjoyed that. And then they settled right down in their day. And in in their classrooms at all levels, I saw meditation, independent work in student led classrooms. And often I noticed kind of that the teacher sat in the back. They they kind of have their seats in a circle or semi circle, but we always are, at least I'm used to having teachers up front. But I noticed how controlled and how activated the kids were. Oftentimes, when the teacher kind of blended in with the kids in the background and they were up there leading the classes and it was just kind of a different environment. Just a small thing like that I thought was pretty interesting. And, you know, we 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 never want to, as they said, we never want to take away from our work that we're there to save them. And I thought that was pretty cool. But there to light a post to guide them. And this, the students want to be part of a community and they want to be felt and they want to be seen. That seemed to be a mantra throughout the the teaching methods they had there. And they also said the teacher's attitude is so important and can spread to the entire classroom, which I totally agree. And they and they said, you know, when we start going into this, there's no magic. You just start communication, just be there. And how important it is as I've learned to to be there or you're on the menu at the table. So just just some interesting things. And one of the things that I thought was pretty interesting too, and I've been reading a book about this too, about economics and societies as a whole, that there's a grave cost that we all face if we don't get involved with eradicating racism. And the person that was leading that that particular sessions kind of used interesting vision, he said, you know, keep in mind like you have cataracts. And the and the forces, the the forces, that forces people to see, to not see the greatness in the kids of color oftentimes, that there's kind of cataracts there getting in the way of that. And there can be a tapestry of stories from all races and colors that will enrich us all. And one of the things that I was particularly impressed with is, and we didn't see in our initial presentation of a Kingmakers before we decided to go ahead with their program is this, this, this symposium showed how they had ingrained not only as a nonprofit, but their executive director through many, many years of working in the community and working with leaders way beyond the school district and legislatures and having an extremely supportive superintendent that he had known for several years, how he actually integrated into the actual school system as an equity director. And I think unbelievably, and he had a, he had a group of people around him that really supported him through some very, very difficult years. And I I thought that was pretty interesting because they don't really present all that when they talk about their programming and what they're doing now. But how they got ingrained in Oakland was was quite a task and took many, many years and many, many relationships that they developed over that period of time to be so successful. And and one of the things that they said that the program has to be from the boardroom to the classroom and it has to be sustainable. So those are all different highlights of it. They showed a film that I like all of us at some point in even maybe the district or some of the organizations that I belong to beyond the district. I'd like to see them show that called Revolution Remix. And it was done by the kids and a group of artists. And it kind of tells a really interesting story that could lead into a communication dialogue. And the Saturday session was kind of set up with the kids who talked. You know, was more or less set for the kids to talk with innovations, leaders and other professions that they they could kind of start to look at and mentorships. And one of the things I learned about was Twitch. Because I've never been on Twitch, but I guess that's a big one. So I kind of looked at that a little bit and it was pretty interesting. And I'd just like to make this note that I'd like very much to be part of the communications and the listening sessions that we do with our kids in the district, if that's at all possible. On the nineteenth of April, I also, because I like to be in the schools and with the kids, I continued my in person ventures to Neely O'Brien and Dr. Watson, I talked about that. And it was a very good day and everything like at the other elementary schools that I had been at and watched before was running very smoothly. The kids were very organized. The ones that perhaps did not have permission slips or something on their health were in the gym, but they were running through those kids really fast and everything. And on top of it, I didn't want to take away from their busy day. But one of the administrator asked me to walk through the building with them and I wasn't going to do that, but hey, I'll take up on it. And all the, you know, she was picking up all the wellness things that have to be, that are picked up in every classroom that are already done and then filed back in. And all, you know, walking through the halls, it was, it was, you could hear a pin drop. And kids were on task. They were doing what they were supposed to be doing. And it was just, it was an excellent visit that I had at Neely O'Brien. And because perhaps some of those issues that we have discussed in the past and quite a few years ago, too, with some of our South King County people that have brought some issues, parents before, it made me feel good that I could walk through and see that going on today. So. And let's see, on the twenty first, we circled back as a in 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 house and the people that attended the symposium, we we did some communication about that. Today, I also had the privilege and I was invited to, along with other members of the community, but Chief Padilla asked me to come down this morning to have coffee with the chief of police. And it was an interesting morning and got a chance to talk to many community members. And the mayor actually spoke for a few minutes, Mayor Dana Ralph, and she talked about something that's really been important to me. Because years ago, a whole group of us, some of my closest friends, we were pushing for more and more activities for youth. And and now they're going to the feds, the federal program, the state and King County are going to be dumping a bunch of money apparently into youth programming, which we have needed for a long time. I mean, we have some, the why was part of that, but we need so much more, so much more. And I'm so happy to see them really, you know, going to be working on that along with the police department is going to take a big part in it too, to try to have prevention programs on their table. And of course, I just want to close with this, my ending statement that I always do. Government institutions exist because the community feels there's a need to be developed for the common good. When decision makers of those institutions fail to listen to their constituents, they fail. So I appreciate every report we had tonight, the communication on our board and for all the people who have happened to be tuning in. I hope all of you still still are masked, sanitizing, and we can get rid of this COVID so we can go back to normal. Thank you.
I can go next, if that's okay. I want to start with shout outs. Thank you to the DARTS team for sharing information at our earlier work session. It was very comprehensive. I'm I'm learning more and more about the programming and work in the district, which to me is amazing. I'm specifically interested in the Digital Learning Ambassador Program. I'm a technology integration specialist in my district at my building. So I'm like, oh, that's it. So reach out to me if you want any help or support like that kind of spoke to me. I also appreciated hearing more about Gear Up. We have a Gear Up program in Renton. And what really spoke to me is hearing about like first generation students to college. I was a first generation, I was the first person in my family to ever go to college. And I just realized like I didn't have any access or knowledge or supports. I relied heavily on my teachers because we didn't have those programs when I was in high school. So that really spoke to me. I'm so glad that's happening. Language is a barrier sometimes for for us students or for us people who English is our second or third language. And so it's challenging. So I'm really glad to hear that Gear Up is making things more accessible, college more accessible. So I'm really glad, I was really glad to hear from that DARTS team. So thank you so much. And thanks to all the educators, admin paras, bus drivers, food services for just starting school and you know, we're surviving and thriving. So that's really great. So things I've done in the past, like ultimately board work, board work sessions have happened. We heard about the Equity Council policy procedures and some of their proposals for budget next year. I was really excited to hear about that. I met again with the KEA Rainbow Squad and did a little training for them, a lot of discussion about intersectionality, the importance when we talk about marginalized groups, we talked about the importance of not, you know, painting a broad brush over a group of people, understanding that people have multiple identities and discussing intersectionality is really important. I'm always about social justice work, equity work. It needs to be done. We all need to do it at all times. I'm always going to push to make sure that, and I'll push kindly, but sometimes I won't be so kind that we really need to do equity work. It's really important, like equity work is the work of schools. And so we need to make sure that we do the work and we constantly do it for work. I like what Director Hamada says, from the boardroom to the classroom, everywhere in between, equity needs to be focused in discussion. I also met with the CTE director, Lori Paxton. We had an excellent conversation, meeting between classes for me. It was really great to kind of hear about what's going on at CTE world and the different programs and the work that they're doing. I asked if I can go on some tours of some of the programs, but, you know, COVID stuff, but I would really love to do some building tours of CTE programs. So I'm hoping that could be made. So hoping that can happen because I would love to see some of these great programs in action. Upcoming thing, I'm going to the WASDA Regional Meeting tomorrow. We have more virtual work sessions and I'm going to always and always invite people to ask me to come visit school sites, locations, virtually or in person if my schedule allows. On a personal note, a couple of personal notes, I'm looking forward to our board meetings happening in person or hybrid. We know that our students and educators have started and I think it's important that we're doing what we're asking our staff, our students and families to be doing. And so I'm looking forward to that happening very soon. And also like, there's been a lot of questions about what I'm going to do in the future. So I'm planning on filing as a candidate for the position I hold. So I wanted to kind of make that public out there for position one. I really appreciated my time that I've spent in this short amount of time supporting Kent School District. And I'm hoping that to continue that work if I get elected. So I'm just going to put that out there. I'm going to apply whenever filing date is in May. And that is all for my report.
Go next. I I did want to mention that I was able to watch the budget session. I really wanted to be a part of that last board meeting and I apologize for missing due to some personal issues. But I watched the video and I just want to thank the budget team. It was really an excellent, excellent presentation and I really enjoyed hearing about the guiding principles of S R budgeting. There were a lot of things that I didn't know. So that was really helpful in thinking about our priorities. And so I will take the opportunity. I know Dr. Harmon has extended our input to Friday, right, April thirtieth, and hopefully all of us can get that information to her. But I I do think that's really important to get the feedback of the board and that session was really helpful. I'm also going to be participating in a three hour training on deciphering the district budget budget process or budget training. And this is pretty comprehensive, put out by WASDA, but you know, even though I'm leaving or this is my last year, I do think it's important when we make decisions, we're informed. I also feel, even though this is my last year, I feel very strongly about the board commitment and what it takes to be part of a board member as be a part of the board. And also, you know, the responsibilities that come with it. And I'm very focused this year on putting some of these legislative positions together. And I've chatted with Dr. Watts on some of my thoughts over the years and And I've chatted with Dr. Watts on some of my thoughts over the years and I feel like this is the year that we really need to empower. School Board Directors in various ways. In providing the necessary supports to them. So I am putting a. I am modifying maybe or or I'll submit what my colleagues have already drafted. But I will put in a proposal for review with the board next time and I'm hoping all of us will think about. You know, how we can make a difference at the legislative level because I really do feel Kent School District has a voice. They really respect us. Where we have to provide and as an input. And, you know, when I went to OSBI to speak, the legislators were there, several legislators were there. And they asked really great questions and they want to hear from us. So. I would urge, I know Dr. Watts has approached district staff about what would be their priority. So I look forward to receiving that as well. Thank you.
I just mostly have shout outs tonight. We've been doing a lot of board work. First off, I want to welcome Ms. Santello. I don't know if I officially welcomed you. I know you've been around and I want to thank Ms. Howley because I know you're training her well. And so I appreciate that. Also, I gave a shout out to you, Dr. Harmon, last night for keeping us on track when we were looking at our goals, for keeping us on track with our policy work. So. But you weren't there last night, so I wanted to say it in person. And yeah, I echo the information with Director Benno said about the DARTS team and Mr. Christie and the presentation. What's always exciting to me is when I see people present and they're not reading from their slides pretty much at all. They just. Have such a wealth of knowledge that they're just and they're so. Excited about what they're talking about, that they're not really reading their slides. They're just sharing information. And so I really appreciate that. And I saw the same thing with Ms. Wilson and Ms. Jones with the recruitment and retention policy too. So. That makes, when I get presentations like that, it makes me more excited about the work going on and it makes me. You know, it really makes me feel confident in what's going on. And so I really appreciate that tonight. And yeah, and so and I'm looking forward to hearing more about the back to school task force getting. In place to get a plan for the summer. And I'm looking forward to our future work sessions and policy work and and that race and equity policy getting on the agenda. To vote on and last but not least, thank you to all. Everyone who provides lunches and is feeding our kids and has been doing so since the beginning of this pandemic. And Ms. Fields, thank you so much for your team and making sure that those kids are getting fed. So that's really all I have to say tonight. Thank you, everyone. And also I appreciate all my board colleagues, as I always try and say. Thank you.
Thank you. So yeah, I echo what many of my colleagues said. Again, I am, I really enjoy the presentations. I it again, it amazes me with the, especially with the technology presentation. Because I remember when I first got on the board, there was a lot of push against digital learning. And so it's amazing how that's flipped. And how far we've come and and we've recognized the value of that. So thank you so much for that. And thank you, Dr. Watts, for actually. Being a voice for that during that time as well and and leading that work. It is very important. And thank you to the team that supports it. I'm very impressed with what we're doing in the school, the district, you know, school districts have really stepped up. We were never internet providers. We were never, I mean, there's so many things that the district has stepped up to be. And you guys have done so wonderfully. So thank you so much for all of your effort and all of your work and your continued. Efforts to be better and to better serve. So we appreciate that very much. Thank you for the other presentation by HR. That was also. Really important. I really enjoy the work that's happening. I'm very excited about the affinity groups. I was actually, I led that this year for our first time in Auburn. And we have affinity groups and it has been received well for the most part. And I'm not going to pretend that there are people who are not. Don't have neck, other things to say about it, but that's navigating this work. And so. As we continue to strive for equitable practices and and supporting both our staff and our students. Around the racial equity work, we just have to be prepared to have those hard conversations and continue to push forward in the work. So I do appreciate the fact that this is something Kent is doing. I also want to take a moment to say hello to Ms. Santello. I I had the pleasure of interviewing her and so I'm excited that you're here. This is our first time. Kind of meeting. So welcome. I look forward to getting to know you better and. Learning more about you. So you're you're on a great team and you're being trained by an amazing person. So thank you, Ms. Howley, for your work to support her as well. Thank you, everyone that's watched. We appreciate you tuning in. Thank you to all the staff for the work that you do every day. It's funny, I was talking to my daughter today and she said that more and more kids were wanting to go back to school. She says a lot of people are change, kids changing their minds because they're seeing their friends in school, which is exciting. So I'm I'm very excited that that's happening. And so so great work, team, great work, district. We're doing well. So we're doing well. We're we're, we've got this. So thank you so much for everyone that participates again. The Nutrition Services Staff, hands down, that hero day is is much deserved, so much deserved. So thank you so much for what you do to support all of our students and and their siblings and and families. It is much, much appreciated. And with that, I will say good evening and you guys have a wonderful evening. Our meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Have a great one.